Excuse me one minute. If anybody else, we have one person who signed up. If anybody else wants to sign up and speak before the city council, I need you to come in and sign up. I'm going to take it up to the city clerk here in just a moment. Thank you. Last call. If you want to speak before the city council, please come up and sign up. Going once? Going twice? All right. We are going to hereby adjourn the special council meeting that the reception for the newly elected officials to our city. And I want to take this opportunity to welcome our newest members. Rita Maxwell, thanks for being here. Glad you got elected. And of course, half of y'all are here for Mr. Thompson, Ward four. Congratulations. Also need to congratulate Rick Favors on his reelection to Ward six. And of course, Pat Byrne to Ward two. So we've adjourned the special council meeting. Now I'll call to order our Midwest City Council meeting. And we've got an action-packed agenda for you tonight. As you can see, everybody here, it always makes you nervous when you see a whole bunch of people here. But anyway, we do have a lot of awards and things to give out this evening. So with that being said, I would ask that Mr. Sullivan would come down and offer the invocation. I do want to call attention to two special guests. Cadet Hudson from Midwest City High School ROTC program. He's a senior at Midwest City and plans to go to UCO for nursing when he graduates. Thanks for being here. And Cadet Cobal, she is a junior. Did I say it right? I got it. And she does plan to go to nursing. And her last sentence to me was she plans to go to OU. So boomer. So that being said, please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
God will forgive you for that outburst, Mayor. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening to conduct the business of this city, we humbly come before you acknowledging your sovereignty in all things. Give you thanks and opportunity to serve this community, this great community of Midwest City. Thank you for entrusting this council with its oversight and its care. Father, we thank you for these men and women and their willingness to serve. Father, we ask your blessing be upon them tonight. Grant them wisdom and discernment. Father, I ask that there be unity in their decisions and that they be for the good of the whole. May your guiding hand be upon them. Father, we pray that solutions are revealed tonight to many things that are happening in this city. We're grateful for this blessing of this great city and this great nation. Father, we recognize that we are a nation and a city and a state of abundance, and we thank you for that. Father, I ask that you be with those who are serving to serve this community, serve this state and this nation. Father, those who are at the ready as we speak all over the world to defend our freedoms. Grant them peace and safety. Father, we thank you so much again for these fine people who are willing to serve. We ask your blessing be upon them tonight. Mostly, Father, we thank you for your son, Jesus, and his sacrifice on the cross for us. And we ask these favors in his holy name. Amen.
Will you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please be seated. Okay, we've got several presentations to do. And I would like to call the president of the Tree Board forward. And we've got some awards to give out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it very much. And so for the Art Day contest this year, we had an art contest and the theme was learn characters from trees, values from roots, and change from leaves. What a beautiful statement for our city. So we had 17 entries. That's way more than last year. So we appreciate all the schools who participated and all the teachers. Thank you so much. And so let's get to the bottom of this, so the prices, right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All right. For the high school, the first place winner is Chloe Lamb. Congratulations. Unfortunately, the second place winner could not be here. She will pick her up, check later on, and we want to recognize her. She's a Jaleah Cuban, and congratulations to her as well. Okay, the third place is Jasmine Coleman. This is the middle school. The first place winner is Amaria Sampson. Bay Mia, did I say that right?
Yes, Bay Mia.
All right, good. You got it? Oh, wow. That's hard. The second place is Maya Crumb. Oh, Crumb, see? Excuse me. All right, the third place, Avery Annett. Annett. Congratulations. Mary, the Midwest City Board takes us to high school, right? Yeah. Do we have Jasmine Coleman? Okay, all right. That's it, Mayor. I have a special, yes, yes. Mary, would you come down here, please? I don't know whether you know Mary or not, but I do. I got to know her a couple of years and worked with her. She's a wonderful lady and she's retiring. So we want to recognize her for her 42 years. I can't leave for the city and for the tree board. Forty-two years. Mary, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Our tree board does a wonderful job. We're a tree city, been a tree city for 42 years. And they pick where all the trees are going. So thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it. Terry Craft? Oh, okay. We have several proclamations we got to get through this evening. This is Terry Craft, our grants manager and jack of all trades.
We have fair housing staff here.
Yeah, we've got some fair housing staff.
Fair housing staff, come on down. Fair housing is an obvious concern of ours. And we promote fair housing and affordable housing in the city of Midwest City. And this is a fair housing month. So whereas the US Department of Housing and Urban Development reports that 2024 is the 56th anniversary of the passage to the Fair Housing Act and landmark civil rights law signed by President Lyndon B. Johnson on April 11, 1968, that made discrimination in housing transitions, transactions unlawful. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing because of race, color, origin, national origin, religion, sex, disability, and family status. And this year's theme is fair housing, the act in action. Whereas the city of Midwest City endeavors to inform and educate the citizens of their right to freely choose where they want to live. And is the city committed to the equal opportunity to access housing. So therefore, I'm Matthews, the mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim April as the fair housing month in the city of Midwest City, and ask that all citizens educate themselves to the rights of fair housing and of fair housing in our community. You got to do a party pick here. Thanks again for being here. Well, the Midwest City Fire Department came down here and joined you. What is your, oh? The chief. Our fire department is the best in the state. We maintain an ISO one rating because of their hard work and dedication to this community. And anytime we get to honor them, we take an opportunity. So whereas International Firefighters Day was created in 1999 following the tragic death of five firefighters in Australia, and is celebrated on May 4th of each year, remembering the dedication, courage, and the need for firefighters all over the world. Whereas this day is a time where the world's community can recognize and honor the sacrifices that firefighters make to ensure that their communities and environments are safe as possible. Whereas our Midwest City firefighters are committed to providing the highest level of public service to our community and residents, protecting lives and property throughout fire suppression, disaster management, fire prevention, and public education. Whereas they endeavor to be mentally and physically prepared to hold the, to take bold and aggressive action in the execution of their mission, as evidenced by the 8,500 calls they responded to in 2023, which 223 were actual fire incidents. So therefore, I'm Matthews, mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim May 4th is firefighter appreciation day and ask all of you, when you see a firefighter, thank them for their service. My son's a firefighter as well, so I've got to treat him nice. Paul Street, Kerry? Steve?
Kerry.
Kerry?
And we look for volunteers for public works. We have a lot of folks. And only one graciously committed to showing up this evening.
Our man. Well, I didn't know this was a thing. But whereas May 2024 is International Compost Awareness Week, the largest and most comprehensive education initiative of the compost industry, including or according to the Compost Research and Education Foundation. Whereas the 2024 theme best reflects the international goals of fighting climate change by highlighting the roles compost plays, which include decreasing methane by recycling organic waste, helping with climate change by mitigation, by removing carbon from the atmosphere, and by reducing fertilizer inputs and increasing soil resists. Whereas composting is an effective form of waste and education, reuse, and recycling, and is becoming one of the primary methods that communities use to reach waste and diversion goals and create local green jobs. Whereas communities, woo! You rubbed this into it.
No, I didn't.
Just watch the mayor sweat through this one. Whereas communities throughout their local governments, highway departments, soil conservation service, and extension offices, the public works professionals can have a significant impact on clean water, soil, climate change, and landfill diversion by including or using compost for public works projects. Whereas all residents are able to use materials such as yard trimmings, vegetable cuttings, food scraps, biosolids, manures, and shavings to contribute to composting. Therefore, I'm Matthews. You hereby proclaim May 5th through the 11th, 2024 is International Compost Awareness Week. And let me add that we develop and sell our own compost out of the water reclamation facility. And we encourage you to go out there. It's good stuff. It really is. So we encourage everybody to use compost and divert anything they can from the waste facilities. So congratulations.
One of the first public works departments in the entire state actually to divert all their green waste to our compost facility. See, that's one of the projects voluntarily through the facility's maintenance and many of our parks, all of the trees and woody debris that we remove actually get taken to our compost facility and recycled. It's part of the reason I'm glad I see them here to help represent the city.
Okay, Chief Whitley. This is our newest police chief, Greg Whitley. Midwest City Board is red, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. May is Police Week. And the service that our police officers give to this community is phenomenal. We, and of course, I'm a tad bit biased. But we've got the best police department in the state. And it's an honor for me to stand up here and recognize them. So whereas by joint resolution approved October 1st, 1962, Congress has requested the president to designate May 15 of each year as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the calendar week during which May 1st occurs as National Police Week. Whereas National Police Week is to honor both our working officers and support staff, as well as those who have sacrificed their lives in the line of duty while protecting our community, safeguarding our democracy. Whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement in this career face extraordinary risks and dangers of preserving our freedom and security. Whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude and for the dedication of service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers for their contributions they have made to the security and well-being of our people. Whereas the members in the Midwest City Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our residents, merchants, and responding to 80,000, 80,000 calls for service in 2023, the training to become elite officers in outreach for mental health and maximizing their resources to effectively suppress violent crime in our communities. So therefore, I'm Matthews, mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim May 12th through the 18th as Police Appreciation Week. And once again, when you do see a police officer, thank them for their service and what they do, what they bring to this community. One more. All? Steve, Kerry? Kerry, I just said that.
This is Brandon Bundy, and that's her book.
Yes, ma'am. Brandon? Ah, you've been told about jail. You don't have a chance.
You were a official public works employee, I guess.
He's refusing to direct. I will say, and I say this every chance I get, policemen and firemen do get a lot of public recognition, and they do deserve it. But these are the folks that make sure you get clean water, that the bad stuff goes away when you flush the toilet, that our roads are in good shape, and everything else that you don't see. The trash gets picked up and all of that. And these folks are the ones that are responsible for that and deserve recognition. So whereas May 19th through the 25th, 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canada, the Canadian Public Works Association, and with the theme of advancing quality of life for all. Whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. Whereas our public works professionals focus in on the infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, of vital importance to sustain, sustainable, and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and the well-being of citizens in Midwest City. Whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Midwest City to gain knowledge of the, and maintain the ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in your respective communities. So therefore, I'm Matthews, mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim May 19th through the 25th as National Public Works Week. And thank these guys and girls when you see them on the street for the job that they do. We're done. No. You're on the clock. Thank you all for your patience. We had a lot, but every one of those proclamations are important. And it's important that our community recognizes the hard work of the people that are working behind the scenes every day to make your community safe and clean. So again, thank you for your patience. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You bet. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be taking a five-minute recess. Okay, we're going to call our council meeting back to order. The recess is over. We now move into our community-related announcements. Mr. Lyon?
Thanks, Mayor. We'll start with our April sales and use tax report for our community. We had, our sales tax was actually down about 1%, and our use tax was up 10%. Remember, use tax are eBay and places like that, that where you order things, Amazon, and they're delivered to your house. So continue to see strong use of the internet for sure in sales. So overall, for the month, we were relatively flat at about a half percent growth. And that's pretty much where we're at for the whole fiscal year. We're right at point seven three growth for the year, so less than 1%. So our sales tax has flattened out, but it continues to, continue to meet about what it was year over year. So that's not a bad thing. Community-related announcements, the weekend of May 3rd through the 4th, residents may pick up their pre-ordered rain barrels at the household hazardous waste facility located at 8726 Southeast 15th Street. Then on May 4th, Midwest City residents may drop off tires, e-waste appliances, e-wast is TVs and electronics, appliances and scrap metals from 8:00 AM till noon at the household hazardous waste facility, once again at 8726 Southeast 15th. Please bring, if you're dropping off items, please bring your Midwest City, or bring your ID and your Midwest City utility bill. And our next cruisin' for coffee is May 18th in the Santa Fe parking lot at Sooner Town Center. And then on behalf of our administrative staff and staff here at Midwest City, we welcome Rita Maxwell, councilperson Rita Maxwell and Councilman Mark Thompson to our horseshoe. So congratulations on behalf of the staff. Mayor, that's all I have.
Well, before we proceed, Mr. City Manager, if I could make two requests. If in the future, when we're doing the breakdown of the sales tax, if we could get a visual on that so we could process that in a more detailed way and do comparisons month to month. I love the reports that you do, but I think throughout time and space that'll give us...
We can include it in further information.
The other thing is, I know a lot of times we make announcements of incoming businesses. I'd also love to kind of see a breakdown that is publicized and some level of businesses that are closing in Midwest City so we can also track. Because I know a lot of these businesses are ones that we've invested in. And so I'd like to kind of compare what's coming in versus what came in and left quickly before we're able to really see long-term profits from them. With that also, can I make an announcement, please, community-related? April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And it is, nationally, it is estimated that 17% of women and 3% of men have been victims of sexual violence in their lifetime. In Oklahoma, the rate of rape and attempted rape among females reported to law enforcement has been 35 to 45% higher than the US rate for the past decade. I know that we have a community event that is working to collaborate with our wonderful police department and police chief going on this Friday, April 26th, from 7:00 to 11:00 PM in the community center. This event is focused on unifying and mobilizing victims and survivors and professionals who provide them aid and resources. I also want to thank Lea's Hope, who's in the house. They're a local organization that partners with a lot of state agencies, including the Attorney General's Office, the YWCA, and other organizations that try to direct support and provide resources to survivors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manham.
Mr. Mayor, before you go on, I have a quick announcement.
You bet.
Really, an acknowledgement. I would like us to take a moment and recognize the voice of the Midwest City Council, Ms. Jill Donaldson in the back of the room. She's the voice that everyone hears, but no one gets to see. And since tomorrow is her farewell ceremony after about 10 years of valiant service to this city, as she departs for her new adventures in life, I would like to request that she step forward, Mr. City Manager, and you being her supervisor can request that to happen, and be recognized and appreciated by us with a round of applause.
Come up, Jill. You're still on the payroll for a few more days.
I'm really mad at you, but I appreciate you very much. And I love y'all, and all the former out here. We have former. Thank you very much. I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
For the y'all that don't know, she's the one that keeps all of us in line. And I can't tell you over the last nine years how many times I've heard, "Mayor, you can't do that." Oh, wait, no sweat.
And she does the community announcement, so she made sure not put that on there. But it's, Jill does a great job, so we're going to miss you.
And I do have one quick other community announcement that I didn't hear you read off to him, but the pickleball court opening is going to be May 2nd from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. And I just wanted to thank and acknowledge, I believe, Brandon and Vaughn also. And who else was?
Terry.
Terry. Where did Terry go? Gone, gone. Sorry. But I wanted to thank you all for that. It's funny because my daughter had said to me the other night, "I think we should try pickleball." And they have that at a location in Oklahoma City. And I said, "We'll soon have one in Midwest City, right by Midwest City Elementary, where the old pool used to be, essentially," thanks to the vision of some of our folks in the Midwest City staff. And so I'm very excited to see that is going to hit screen opening very soon.
Brandon, do you have the date?
May 2nd.
May 2nd, 4 o'clock.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
You bet. I haven't seen pickleball. I haven't seen any round pickles.
And I do, I do kind of wonder also, is that going to be on the GIS system for emergency services? Because if she makes me go over and play pickleball, there's a good chance I'm going to need some assistance, maybe fire and IMSA. I'm not sure.
We'll get a blue light phone up there for you.
Something, yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Now, we need to get to business. Ladies and gentlemen, we now move into consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that council members, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any council member requests an item to be, to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the consent agenda items excluding item four to be pulled for discussion, please.
Items, which one?
Item four.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention motion carries. Item number four. Mr. Lyon?
Discussion consideration of possible action of entering into an agreement for professional services with all R.L. Shears Company, PC, in the amount of $178,198 to provide survey and design services for a future federal aid project to construct sidewalks in four locations. Mr. Bundy?
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. This project is part of a federal aid project that we got for sidewalks, various locations throughout the city.
So I really, I noticed that this item and the four locations were also placed on the November 14, 2023 agenda. Is that correct?
It was this fall, if it's November.
And then there were federal funds that we were receiving, and this city would then have to match 20%, of which totaling approximately $300,760. Is that correct?
I don't remember the exact, the match sounds about right.
It's often November 14, the numbers are. And now, so this particular item before us tonight is going to add an additional $178,000 for survey and design.
Yeah, so federal projects, it's 20, 80, 20% match, 80% federal dollars on construction. But it's up to the city to pay for the design 100%. Now, that is going to change in the next few years. So you'll start seeing projects that are just 20% engineering. But as of right now, this project is 100% engineering and then 20, 80, construction.
And I also noticed in the agenda item, I don't know if it was the previous one from '23 or this one, that we would have to budget for this project for the next fiscal year coming. And I just wanted to see if we've been able to budget that already, or is that, is that within the upcoming fiscal year?
Brandon, you have that on the...
Yes, we did budget the match. Start budgeting the match for the future years.
Okay. Because we're now looking at a $480,000 investment from the city technically to accomplish this task. And are each of these four sites close to a bus stop that you're aware of?
So the, there are two of these locations that are on a bus route. The inner, the segment on Midwest and then the segment on Air Depot and Reno are both because of a bus route.
Yeah. And I'm all pro sidewalks. I think that's one of the core government services that we provide. I just would like to see some equity in the way that we prioritize areas that we are building additional sidewalks because we have such limited funding to go around. I know we have areas within the city that are of lower socioeconomics, sometimes impoverished, to basically depend on the limited bus transportation that we have. And a lot of the bus routes that we have, particularly on the northeast side, lack sidewalks for miles and miles. So we're expecting people with disabilities to walk through grass streets to make it to the streets. I'd like to see some sort of a scale of how we're prioritizing where we are investing, what funds we have for sidewalks. And then the other thing is, I know that we are also investing a lot of money in different types of studies and consultation from reports. And this is just a request of the city manager of, to get kind of a breakdown of what this is costing us annually and the investment of these types of studies. breakdown of what this is costing us annually and the investment of these types of studies. And then also, when we invest these funds, because I've seen a lot of studies, including, for example, the Air Depot Business Corridor Study that was approved in twenty twenty-two. And I don't know what the status of any implementation on that is, to make sure that when we're investing in these studies, that these projects are actually completed and so therefore we're not wasting money unintentionally. But with that, I move to approve.
I would like to address some of your questions. So the, this is the first federal aid sidewalk project that we've received. Previously, we did a hundred percent city funds. A sidewalk, depending on how many driveways, is about three hundred thousand dollars per mile. So even though they look small, these four locations, it's a substantial amount of money. And on, as far as what locations were chosen, a lot of it is to score well. We have to compete with Norman Edmond, Oklahoma City for these funds. And so we can't just pick any area. We have to prioritize it, what scores well. And so I'd like to highlight those locations. The, the section on Tenth Street from Douglas to Post has been a priority for the city for six years. One time, I tried to design it. We didn't have any construction funds, and so it was tabled. We've since done two phases of that, but we ran out of funds both times. So this will complete that. There's a, we call it a desire path. When you see the grass dead because people, so many people walk, that is that segment. We also have a desire path on Midwest, which is on the east side. We have a sidewalk on the west side, but there's an apartment complex on the east side, and a lot of people walk there. That's also a bus stop. The section on Reno is the busiest bus stop in Midwest City, and a lot of people use the services at the Plasma Center and the Goodwill at Reno and Life Church. And so they walk that way. So you'll also see a desire path there. The fourth location is Douglas, and that sidewalk is probably the busiest sidewalk in Midwest City, from Joby Barnes Park South, where people walk and they kind of do the loop around the golf course. That's one segment of that area. So we picked these sidewalks. We really thought about these locations. These are not just, let's put some sidewalks somewhere. So we really do think about this, and we will keep plying for sidewalks, but it just depends on where they are. We can't just have every sidewalk. The ultimate goal is to have sidewalk on all the arterials.
No, and I respect that. And I understand that, you know, accommodation is necessary, right? And, for example, for me, sidewalks are a privilege. I don't need them. I have a vehicle. But there are people within our community who don't have vehicles, who are maybe within a wheelchair, right? So if we're gonna make investments, I'd like to prioritize those who are dependent on sidewalks, you know, and, and bus stops solely versus the rest of us who like to go for a stroll in the afternoon. And, and I respect the scale that you're using and the limitations you have to be able to be competitive in the bids that you're putting. But maybe this is a conversation we need to have more in depth. Just because I have, personally have an issue when I see people with disabilities, people who are elderly, walking in the winter cold or in the dead of the summer, through sometimes weeds grown this high because we haven't been able to get to them, carrying groceries from Dollar Tree in my community. And so I'd like to see some equity in the way that we prioritize these.
Let me ask a question, since you've opened this up for discussion. Mr. Bundy, do we have citizens that are reaching out to the city requesting sidewalks be put in in certain areas because of any type of disability or lack of mobility in general?
No, it's, it's pretty rare that, I mean, there are citizens that have called me and asked about sidewalks. There was a citizen, I think, two or three years ago, that was around Post and Tenth and, and asked for it. And I said, "Well, I have good news. We are actually trying to build a sidewalk. It's just been a long time coming." Yeah, we try to accommodate people's requests. Obviously, we look at those desire paths, which is where people generally want to have to walk. We also look at the bus stops and trying to get them accessible. Most of our sidewalks that we build are because of road projects. We build them with the road projects. Midwest, for instance, that we're resurfacing, is three miles of sidewalk that we're putting in. So it just, it's gonna take a long time to put sidewalks in. And I know sidewalks can be divisive, but it's something that we're trying to do, connect schools, bus stops, businesses.
Okay, I believe you made a motion to approve.
Yes.
Second. We got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bundy. Discussion item number one, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration of possible action improving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Midwest City, Choctaw, Nakoma Park School District. Mr. Mosh.
Good evening. As many of you know, Choctaw Nakoma Park Schools are building a new elementary school on the south side of Southeast Twenty-Ninth between Anderson and Westminster. Several months ago, we were approached by Choctaw Nakoma Park Schools to provide water, and the city agreed to provide water. At that time, we were not approached concerning sewer. Choctaw Nakoma Park ran into some issues with sewer with the Department of Environmental Quality, has come back now and approached us about providing sewer. What this MOU does is it recognizes the fact that the current connection potentially for that sewer would be in the moratorium, which would not be allowed. So what this MOU does, it sets out two different possibilities for connection. We can agree today, and what the MOU does is, does agree today, that they can connect outside of the moratorium. And they would have to go down twenty, the south side of Southeast Twenty-Ninth and then come across once they get to their location, where they can cross and connect outside the moratorium. The plan is, when we met with Choctaw Nakoma Park Schools, that school is hope, they hope to have it built and opened in August of twenty twenty-six. There is a possibility that the moratorium may be lifted by then, so we wrote into this a second option, that if the moratorium does get lifted, that they then would be able to connect within the current moratorium area, which would no longer exist. This has been designated for them as a service line so that nobody else would be able to connect to this line. And obviously, we would not be able to provide either water or sewer until such time as they receive agreement from the city of Oklahoma City, since the school is located within the Oklahoma City limits, agreeing to allow the city of Midwest City to provide the school water and sewer. With that, the only thing I will add is, on Friday of last week, Choctaw Nakoma Park Schools have met, have signed the agreement in that, and their signed agreement with no changes is with us at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions and would recommend approval.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Just a quick question. So no city funds will be involved in Davis?
No. No, no city. That is, that is correct.
I have a follow-up to his question. So hypothetically speaking, if there were businesses that we deemed that were of public interest to our community, who wanted to fund their own expenditure to tap into the sewer and the water system, would this also be made available to them?
It has been in the past. Just so you know, right around that area is Eagle Industries, former Eagle Industries, which is a state superfund site. And we have, there's no water and sewer out in that area by Oklahoma City. And there's groundwater contamination, so they can't use wells. I believe it was Davis Automotive is on the south side. And when I first got here, we, they needed water. And so we entered into an agreement with them to provide them water, provided again, that Oklahoma City agrees to allow them to be served water by the city of Midwest City. Oklahoma City did agree. And we are, to this day, providing them water. Now, mind you, within our ordinances, there's a little bit of an increase in cost for us providing water when it's outside the city limits of the city of Midwest City. But yes, to answer your question, we have done this before, and this is available potentially.
But I want to be really clear about this. I don't want any misunderstandings. That is in Oklahoma City. And the development in Oklahoma City is not always in the best interest of Midwest City. We're not gonna provide water and sewer to new development in Oklahoma City. Not unless they're currently there. And we did the Eagle, we, the only reason we did the Eagle Industries is because the EPA asked us to do that. And they were current, they were currently had business there.
But you'd be willing to entertain if somebody approached you with that? And obviously, you could give the same answer to the business owner if they fall within Oklahoma City jurisdiction, right? So we're not closing our doors and saying it's a no-go, but people could reach out to the city if they hope to.
Under certain circumstances.
Do we have any representatives from the Choctaw Nakoma Park School District with us tonight?
I did not see anybody here, but I don't believe so.
They're not here.
Just so you know, I have been in contact with them directly. Tim and I met with them as well as some others a couple of weeks ago, and we have been in constant contact. Personally, I have been with them up through, in fact, Friday of last week.
One of the main reasons, obviously, that we're doing this is because kids live in our jurisdiction and will be attending that school. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Seventy, according to Choctaw Nakoma Park Schools, seventy-five percent of the children that'll be attending this elementary school are from Midwest City addresses.
And I want to applaud the city for being flexible enough to negotiate this. And I just, I, I know that we were told about a month or two ago that the remainder of the city's study should be in within a year. And my hope is that we can get ourselves together and start making progress because if the deadline for the infrastructure for the school is within two years, my hope is that they can do the most cost-effective way, which is to tap into our resources versus go on the long route. Because public systems are also tax-funded institutions, so they're not corporations that have a lot of money to go around.
And this is a good example. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve. This is a good example of don't believe everything you see on Facebook or read because there was some keyboard warriors that are out there basically saying that it's gonna shut down Choctaw Nakoma Park building. There was discussions going on behind the scenes that weren't public for, for obvious reasons. And I want to commend the city manager and the city attorney for leading those discussions because oftentimes, when we're involved in discussions, you got two different government entities, an attorney for us, attorney for them. You get them to agree to anything is a miracle. And then you got a city manager and a superintendent that got worked out extremely fast because everybody was aware that this was gonna shut down the building of this school, which we didn't want to do. And some stuff can't be put out in the public spectrum. And these guys were working with a hood on top of them because they couldn't tell everybody, "Give us a chance. Let us work on it." And like I said, people get on Facebook and, "Oh, the city's gonna shut down the schools." And that, that was nowhere near what was going on. You just can't tell everybody what's going on because then you're gonna read about it or see it in the news. And this is something the attorneys, superintendent, and the city manager had to work out. So I second Mark's motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension motion carries. Item two, thank you, Mr. Mosh, for your explanation. Item number two, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration of possible action recommending for approval and ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Forty-three, Water Sewer Sewage Disposal and Stormwater Quality, Article Three, Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Division Ten, Sewer Mainline Backup Service Program, Section Forty-three dash two fifty-one, Provisions, Section Forty-three two fifty-four, Fees, Providing for Repealer and Severability. Mr. Mosh.
Thank you. This is an item that has come before the city council before. We have a program where we attempt to alleviate and pay for damages caused to buy sewer backups into people's homes. What this change specifically does is, we have run into some situations where the amount of money that we have in that fund will not pay for the damages or pay for the, what is needed for, to, to create a fix. So what this does is, it increases those fees, or increases the amount that'll be in the fund. It does not increase the fee whatsoever. But it increases the amount that can be collected and for the city to be able to use through the fees that are collected, to be able to work on and remedy sewer backups into people's homes. And all it does is, it raises those limits that the city can.
And it'll take well over ten years to ever build up much fund balance because we're not increasing this at all. It's just, it's what was already on the books.
I think this is a great idea, but I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that I have a problem with is that along with this agenda item, that the city manager would get to settle any claim for less than a hundred thousand dollars. I'd like those settlements, whether they're a dollar all the way to a hundred thousand and beyond, to be brought before a public meeting in a city council setting. Therefore, me and my colleagues are informed, therefore, we are being transparent, and therefore, we are identifying patterns of liabilities to taxpayers. So we are collectively being proactive and making sure we're reducing those types of patterns. So my friendly amendment to this would be to approve the agenda item with the amendment that any settlement less than a hundred thousand or above would be brought before city council for approval.
Just so you're aware, that will now cause a conflict in city ordinance. What that language was doing was being reflective of what is generally in city ordinance. That does give the city manager already the ability to settle any claim that might be in court, up to a hundred thousand dollars. That is already a part of city ordinance. What this does is, it reflects that ability of the city manager to make those decisions within this program as well. In theory, he already has that because some of these can wind up in court, and it's just a reflection of that. So if we take that amendment right now, today, it will cause a conflict within city ordinance. Now, if you want to say you would like for us to study that, and the city manager would like for us to study that and potentially look at that and bring it back through the Ordinance Review Committee. One thing I did forget, this ordinance change was reviewed by the Ordinance Review Committee and approved for, recommended for approval to the city council. If you would like to do, request that, we would have to look at the overall scheme to, to do that.
I would like to do the latter. And I recall, when we updated the ordinance, it was my first city council meeting, I think. Councilwoman Bain was there too. And unfortunately, I feel like I was duped into my yes vote. And what is happening is, there are a lot of settlements beyond this subject matter that council is not privy to, that I, myself, have had a hard time getting access to records to in order to be able to identify liability patterns, with the hope of proactively reducing those. So, and if, and I, and I understand your legal explanation of that, but it is specifically, the language that you say is not necessary is specifically embedded in this agenda item. And if, in theory, it exists within the ordinance, then I would not need to see the necessary language, the language to be duplicated. And so I feel like I'm going to be, I would like to have a deeper study of that. And really, I'd like to reconsider the previous ordinance change that.
Now, mind you, the previous ordinance change did not create the ability for the city manager to settle. It only increased the amount. The city manager has had that ability for an extended period of time. All we, and the reason it went up to that amount was because it, those are the amounts that are set in state law as well. In other words, we followed the contractual amounts. To bid a contract, you, a construction contract, it has to be, it's required to be a hundred thousand dollars or more. All we were doing was following those kinds of state laws when those items were increased and responding to that as well.
But the state law would not prohibit this body from having public transparency on settlements under a hundred thousand dollars. I know it may be encumbrance every once in a while if we have an additional agenda item for the sake of transparency and awareness of my colleagues and myself. But with that, I would move to reject based on the language.
Mr. Mayor, if I may be heard, please.
Yes, ma'am.
As part of this body that considered the increase in the maximum limit to which the city manager was allowed to authorize settlement, respectfully, Councilwoman Bain, and the decision was made, and again, I don't know at what part of your tenure you were in at that time, but the decision was made and the need to allow that flexibility to the city manager up to the hundred thousand dollar threshold was made, with the focus on, while this is our home, and while we serve here at the pleasure of our constituents. while this is our home and while we serve here at the pleasure of our constituents and we deal with the business of the city, it is in fact a business and that man in his alliance sits at the helm of this business. And so, as a body, we felt very confident that his discretion in reaching settlement determinations up to the limit of a hundred thousand dollars was appropriate. I'm going to say, I feel that the same is true with regard to this matter. I have had some offline conversations just coincidentally with a couple of different members in this room about the number of claims that we've been having for sewer backup and the value of those claims is rather staggering, which is also why we are trying to increase what our fund limits are essentially to be prepared for those instances to occur. While, you know, we do deal with certain aspects of the business of the city of Midwest City, it again involves a city manager at the helm to make those business decisions. It's my personal opinion and having had a front row seat to Mr. Lyons operating as our city manager and previously our assistant city manager during my tenure on the council, I do believe there's not a more deserving person to discern that discretion up to a hundred thousand dollars. I appreciate the view on transparency to the system and so forth. And again, you know, to the extent that settlements are not confidential, which Mr. Marsh, you may wish to make a comment in this regard, you know, perhaps there is a way that that information can be shared with regard to, similar to the, for further notification or something on our city agendas. That way, it is publicly accessible information. But I really do not feel like it's our place, honestly, to encroach on what I view to be within the city manager's job duties and I feel comfortable with him at the helm of doing. So, with all respect, I am going to move to approve this agenda item as it is written without your friendly amendment. So, we're going to have competing motions.
I just want to respond to some of your commentary. I respect what you're saying and your perspective on our role. I'm not suggesting that any of us take over the city manager's duties. However, I also recognize within the charter that the reason we have elected officials here is to oversee the city hall and the city management's decisions. I'm not suggesting for us to make decisions on behalf of the city manager, but that we have access to the information and the decisions being made by the city manager. That is why I have this concern. And part of our fiduciary, we're not here to be decoration around the horseshoe, but it's to oversee the financial matters of the city, including liabilities, the budget, and so on and so forth. But with that, I respect your motion that you made.
And so, with that said, with my motion indicating a request that to the extent that it is possible, given whether there's a confidential settlement or not at issue, that that information would be provided for further information within the city agenda type of thing, city council agenda. Are you comfortable with that, Councilwoman Bana, as opposed to asking for there to be a outright public discussion of all those items? Are you comfortable with allowing the city manager to, as he does with other areas, have discretion up to the hundred thousand dollar threshold so that he can do the business of the city?
Your suggestion, suggestion would be for him, for there to be, that to be incorporated in the additional information on a month-to-month basis when there are settlements that are not confidential?
Correct.
I, if there could be a commitment that every settlement that is under a hundred thousand dollars that is not deemed to be confidential would be actively reported on the additional information, I would be content with that. I would have also been content with receiving my open records request, you know, before the budget review and budget vote last year, and I'm going to be making the same request of any and all settlements that have been made in the last fiscal year. So, I am privy before I approve the budget. So, if we have those levels of transparency and equitable and equal access to that type of information, I don't think this would be an issue. The problem is there has been a lack of access to be fully informed about the decisions I'm being asked to make sometimes.
I have one question I've got, I've got to ask and I support Susan's motion. How were you duped? You said you were duped into voting for something. I'm kind of curious.
And, you know, honestly, Councilwoman Bane's here and I know she was in that setting as well, but I will tell you, it was one of our first meetings and I remember it was held in the conference room. The item was presented to us that the state had updated its laws, which it technically had, and that we needed to approve this so that our ordinances were in compliance with the state laws. And that there was also an emergency order that was attached to that agenda item. And that conversation, I actually turned around to the city attorney and the city manager who were there and I specifically asked, "Will we still be able, will you still inform us of these settlements that are being made on a regular basis if this authority is given to you in order so that we are in compliance with state law?" That has not happened. And unfortunately, there's a pattern in practice of commitments being made to me and maybe other colleagues of mine that appear to be discriminatory against the women who serve in this council who are, as a matter of pattern of practice, are excluded from decisions being made by the city manager and the mayor and the vice mayor, unfortunately.
Okay, I do have a motion on the floor and I have a second. Go ahead and conduct a real call vote, please.
Point of clarification, we're voting on the motion that I proposed.
Yes.
To adopt this discussion item as written with the understanding that any settlements that are not confidential will be disclosed in the further information section of the city council meeting. Is that correct? Are we all in agreement what we're voting on?
Councilwoman Eath, can I ask you a question about that motion? How are we defining confidential? What the city manager and the city attorney deem confidential or what is legally defined as criteria for confidentiality?
I'm going to leave that to the discretion of the city manager and the city attorney with what needs to occur under the auspices of being a confidential settlement because it's very difficult to sort of set parameters for that, being a lawyer myself. And again, it's an issue where, just like with state government, transparency is, you know, a paramount concept and yet, at times, there are issues that cannot be brought forward into the public eye for certain reasons. And so, I'm going to leave that to their hands, essentially. So.
Okay, once again, I do have a motion and a second on the floor. Go ahead and call, real call vote.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Due to the arbitrary definition that, and based on my experiences, no.
Ward six?
Yes.
And the mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number three, Mr. Lyon.
Before moving on, I just want to let everyone know I am going to be leaving, but I'm leaving you in the capable hands of Vicki Floyd, so thank you and have a.
All right, are you ready?
Item number three, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one sixty-six, public hearing discussion, consideration, possible action approving a special use permit to allow eating establishments sit-down alcoholic beverages permitted in the C-three commercial, community commercial district for the property described as a part of the northeast quarter, Section four, Township eleven, range two west of the Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma, sixty-two twenty east Reno. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. This application is for a special use permit. There's a restaurant at the location that the city manager indicated. They are looking to sell alcoholic beverages out of that restaurant as part of their sales. We complied with all state and local notification requirements. The applicant was present at the planning commission meeting and had an opportunity to speak before the planning commission and both the planning commission and staff recommend approval of this item.
Don't drink, but I'm telling you, it's one of the better restaurants that's moved into Midwest City. They're over at Tenth and May and it was a long way to drive, but we went there and I was extremely glad when they opened up in Midwest City. It is an excellent place, not just for Mexican food, but there's, there's other fish and stuff in there, seafoods.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to say about this particular issue on the agenda?
Other than eat there, please, because we need them to stay open.
It comes highly recommended by, by Councilwoman Burns, so.
Are the owners of the establishment here today?
Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
They're, they're here. The owners are here.
One moment. Would you all come forward?
You guys got anything to say?
No.
Thanks for being here and thanks for being in Midwest City.
It's your word.
Appreciate it.
No, it's Mark's word.
No, it's Mark's word.
Is it Mark's word?
And, and the food is delicious.
So, Mark, Councilman Thompson, respectfully, a lot of times, we try to allow, as Ward and the issue is coming forth from, to make the motion and lead the charge. So, would you like to do that on your first day of service?
I would be, I would be pleased to. I will say this, their portions are so large, you almost always leave with a go container. They're excellent food. So, I make a motion, we approve.
Not packed.
I do have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Thanks for being here, guys. Item number four, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one sixty-nine, public hearing discussion, consideration, possible action approving a special use permit to allow eating establishments sit-down alcoholic beverages not permitted in the O-two general office district for the property described as a part of, part of the southeast quarter of Section thirty-four Township twelve north, range two west of the Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma, located at twenty-eight oh one Park Lawn Drive, Suite one oh two. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. As the city manager indicated, this is another special use permit application located at the corner of Park Lawn Drive in east Reno. The applicant is requesting to basically operate a coffee shop out of that, out of that suite in the office building. The both state and local notification requirements were complied with. The applicant was present at the city, at the planning commission meeting and the planning commission and staff both recommend approval of this item.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council concerning this item?
I do have a question. Matt, if you don't mind, and I'm not sure that you're with us, but do you have any indication as far as what the hours will be for this business? Because the reason I ask is it's right in the area of the hospital district and it's been my hope for some time that we would get a coffee location over there with food available for medical staff that was open both during daytime and nighttime hours because we have so many people that work the late shift and if you've either been a staff member or even just sitting at the bench.
I think it's open flame and they're usually open from like six-thirty to seven at night. So, I, don't quote me on that, but.
They're, they're in the audience.
Are you guys here?
Great. Can you come forward and just hear my plea, essentially? As someone who has spent hours at our local hospital, folks who are there into the wee hours and wanted to beg for a cup of coffee.
Right now, the problem with that request is that office building has certain hours that the doors, the main doors are open and closed, so we would have to abide by their office hours that they have on their doors.
I see. Well, that's disappointing, but thank you for your application.
Well, thanks for being here and thanks for expanding your business. We appreciate it and I hope that goes well and there's a lot of future development that is going to be coming in that area and good luck with that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Once again, this is a public hearing. Does anyone else have anything to bring before the council? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
Since that is in Ward four as well, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Item number five, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one seventy, public hearing discussion, consideration, possible action approving a resolution amending the comprehensive plan from single-family detached residential land use to commercial land use and an ordinance to redistrict from single-family detached residential R-six to residential commercial district C-one for the property described as the northwest quarter, Section ten Township eleven north, range two west, the Indian Meridian, located at one oh five east Myrtle Drive. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property at one oh five east Myrtle Drive to the C-one zoning district currently. There's a single-family residence on that site. There's a vet business that's in that area that's looking to use some of the commercial shopping space that's to the north of, of the subject of this application, but as part of that, they want to expand and use some of that property on one oh five east Myrtle in that, I guess what's currently a parking area to the, to the west of that is part of their business as well. So, they need to rezone it for the, the uses of the vet clinic specifically on this site. You know, they'd be looking to board some of the, the pets that might, you know, come in for vet, pet visits or things like that. So, if, if the rezoning is approved, you know, they would have to go through and either remodel the existing building or demo and build a new building. They would go through all of our development review processes, you know, we'd make sure we get site group screening between this site and the residences that are there to the east. Outside of that, excuse me, we did comply with all state and local notification requirements. We did get one call from a surrounding owner who was actually supportive of the application. We do recommend approval of the zone change and I do have one note as it relates to the comprehensive plan amendment. You'll notice in the staff report, the, the subject line for this item, you know, is for the future land use designation to go from residential to commercial. After the application was received, we talked with the owner and we sort of decided it is better for that to, future land use designation to be office or retail rather than commercial just because it kind of limits some of the future potential uses that the site might have in sensitivity to the residential properties that are in the area. And that is the recommendation of staff and that was also the recommendation of the planning commission as well, that the future land use designation be office retail instead of commercial.
So, do we have an issue since, I'm pointing this at you actually, Ms. Lloyd, we have an issue because it's set out to be a change to restricted C-one or is that consistent with the use amount that you're proposing?
Sorry, say that one more time.
Sure. The agenda item addresses a request change to be restricted commercial district C-one and from what you were saying, there was a change that was made in order to redistrict for office use, so I was thinking that was a different category than C-one, so that's why I'm asking.
Office, so yeah, the office retail category could work for the C-one zoning district. It can also work for the commercial district. It can kind of work for either.
So, it's encapsulated within C-one, so we're okay with the way the agenda item's worded then?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize, I misunderstood.
In the motion, in your report, it also says that it's recommended that sound mitigation plan. Is that something that we need to put in the motion or is that something you're going to handle without us making it part of the motion?
I mean, that's something as staff that we were planning on sort of making part of, you know, whatever site plan, whether it's a demo and rebuild or if it's a remodel, trying to make sure that we get that specifically as part of the, the site proof fencing and screening adjacent to the residential.
So, do we need to put that in the motion or?
I mean, I, that's, that's a good question. I think you can.
Let's do it.
You certainly can. And it probably just makes it clear to the applicant upfront what council's expectation is.
We did it before with the apartment proposed at fifteenth and Key in order to have appropriate screening between that development and the residential development immediately back to the west.
I see at least two ladies in the audience that are from pet, vet. I'm curious if you all have anything to add to our conversation or you do not wish to approach the podium, you just want to sit there?
Yeah, they don't have anything else.
You both are much more friendly in the store than sitting in these chairs at a council meeting. Okay, all right. So, I would, this is in my ward, I would ask to have this item be approved, however, with the caveat or the friendly amendment.
Just a second, Ms. Eath. This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council concerning this issue?
Can I just?
Hearing or seeing none, go ahead and proceed.
Can I just make a comment? I just want to thank you guys and the services you and your entire staff provide. I, my family was referred to you guys years ago during a emergency crisis with one of our babies and you guys have been more than humane in times of crisis with our pets and your services are very affordable. And you guys have been more than humane in times of crisis with our pets and your services are very affordable. And you guys have been so flexible with our community and all I hear are really good feedback from residents. So thank you guys for being here and I know we need more veterinarians in our state and particularly the more to marry your Midwest city as well. Thank you guys.
One more time, Mr. Mayor, um, and I appreciate what you said, Councilwoman Bana, and echo those same sentiments. It's wonderful business to have and it's wonderful business to have in my ward. Um, so with that, I would move to approve this item. However, with the friendly amendment that, um, this area of request, um, be situated with appropriate fencing or screening, um, as, um, sit, for sound mitigation, for, um, visual mitigation as far as depending on what the future uses are type of thing. And to separate kind of the commercial from the residential aspect immediately to the east. Um, and then also to the south from there. And I appreciate that, uh, the opportunity that we're going to have some, um, possible development there. So with that, I would, um, move accordingly.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Item number six, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, approving an ordinance amending Midwest City Code, Chapter nine, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article seven, sign reg, regulations, section nine dash three eighty-two, definitions and providing for repealer and severability. Mr. Summers.
Uh, this is a, a fairly small amendment to our, our sign ordinance. Uh, if you all looked, uh, looked through it for billboard and information about those, you'll have noticed that we have a definition for billboards, but not really any information or regulations regarding, you know, how tall they should be or how, you know, where they should be placed. Um, staff has always kind of interpreted that billboards are freestanding signs. Um, and this text amendment would, would codify that by specifically listing them under the list of examples of freestanding signs in, in that sign types definition.
Uh, having reviewed that sign ordinance about two years, uh, I appreciate that because I didn't, I didn't catch it. I do have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Item number seven, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, considerations, possible action, approving an ordinance amending Midwest City Code, Chapter thirty-eight subdivision regulations, Article, um, five, application submitted, processing procedures for all Platts and plans, bringing section thirty-eight forty out of reserve entitling it public notice requirements for Platts and plans and providing for repealer and severability. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. Uh, so with, with this text amendment, we, or I guess ordinance, uh, we don't have any plat notification requirements in our regulations currently. Um, there's not really any understate, uh, requirements as far as I can tell either. Um, however, as a, a matter of practice, we have, um, always notified adjoining property owners, uh, both for the, the planning commission meetings, uh, hearings as well as city council hearings. Uh, what this, uh, ordinance would do is make our, our plat notification requirements uh, match the, the notification requirements in our zoning regulations. So we would, uh, begin notifying, uh, property owners within three hundred feet, uh, of, of plat applications that are going for public hearing. It also has requirements similar to what we have in our zoning regulations where the applicant would be responsible for providing staff uh, with the notification list so that we can mail those, uh, letters, uh, out to the adjoining, or to the owners within three hundred feet.
So, uh, much as Councilwoman Bana tends to sound the trumpet of public transparency with regard to fiscal expenditures, um, I tend to sound the trumpet with regard to issues of public notice and anything that comes close to a due process issue. I respect where we are with regard to the public notice that we provide, um, for proposed projects. But I feel like we could do it better in that, um, it would be, in my opinion, a good idea that particularly with regard to these types of, um, large developments, that we have something that comes forward by way of a public notice, um, being made available through our website. It doesn't have to be compelled by our ordinances, but it is something that as a city, we could undertake that would keep our constituency more informed of what is coming forward. Um, there's a lot of times questions are asked where something is raised and it's like, well, only people, you know, the, the next three houses get notice of it, for example. And so, um, I would just put that ask in. I'm not going to add require, or put forward the suggestion as a friendly amendment. It's more directed to you, Mr. City Manager, that I would like to see us doing more with our public notices to just put them forward on the internet. I don't want to put forward any real requirements on that because then it becomes cumbersome and did you meet, you know, that, um, requirement or not that requirement. Um, but it does allow for, uh, better understanding for our citizenry. So, um, with that, I move to approve this item as written.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Item number eight, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one seventy-one, discussion, consideration, possible action, approving an ordinance amending Midwest City Code, Appendix A, zoning regulations, section five, supplemental regulations subsection five point two point three, fencing and screening and providing for repealer and severability. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. Uh, so we, we were asked, um, several months ago to, to look at our, um, residential fencing material requirements. Um, there's a lot of info, uh, here in the, in the memo that I wrote, um, and I'll, I'll try to do my best to kind of summarize it. Basically, we, we changed a lot of our zoning regulations back in twenty-ten, um, adding our specific, specific fencing material requirements largely was not a part of that, but that came as a later amendment in twenty-sixteen, uh, as I, as I noted here in the memo. However, you know, we, we like to keep these, um, updated with, you know, whatever materials might be, um, you know, new to the market, things like that. So it is good for us to revisit it. Um, the draft text amendment, uh, in addition to kind of looking at some of the materials that might be available, I tried to also sort of reorganize it so that the text might be a little bit easier for, for folks to digest, uh, about what types of materials are allowed. So we did look, um, at ten of our peer cities and there is a summary, uh, that follows the memo, um, and is before, uh, the, the ordinance that we've, uh, drafted for this. Um, but in summary of the, the changes and the things that we're recommending, uh, we're, we're looking to add, um, or we're proposing to add some new types of fences to expand the materials that are allowed. So under what I consider slatted fences, you know, those currently we would allow, uh, wood and vinyl, uh, fences with, with slats, our typical stockade fences. Um, we look to add, uh, metal fences to that type. So, you know, if, if they're made of a material that, that mimics a wooden slap, so it has like a certain depth and width, um, you know, we would, we would be okay with that material. We don't feel like it would have a detriment to the character, uh, of, of the neighborhood if, if that type of material was added. Um, the second type that we looked at, um, and this is sort of like some of the other items we've discussed. It's more of codifying policy, but our ordinance currently allows wrought iron fences. There's not really that many wrought iron fences created anymore. A lot of the ones that you see that are newer are, are more of an aluminum material that are made to look like older wrought iron fences. So, uh, we've, we've been allowing those. Um, this would just sort of allow that by right and sort of specifically call it out, uh, in the ordinance. Uh, the third type that we looked at, um, are, um, what we would call ribbed steel or ribbed sheet metal fences. Um, these are allowed in our ordinance currently, but not in residential districts. Um, they're not, they're not allowed in some of our commercial districts either. It's really once you get to our C four and our industrial districts that these types of fences are allowed. But, um, you know, we wanted to look into what would that look like, you know, if, if we drafted an amendment or an ordinance to allow that type of fencing. Now, I will say Oklahoma City does allow this type of fencing in their residential areas. Um, I guess my, my, my recommendation as staff would be that we, that we allow the first and the second type, but not the third type. Uh, personally, I think that, um, these types of fences in residential areas does sort of evoke more of an industrial character uh, and, and might have detrimental, uh, impacts on some of the, the property values, not of the, not just of, you know, the, the property that it's on, but maybe of, uh, some of the surrounding properties as well. Um, I do, I do also propose that we, we make some amendments as far as the coatings on, on metal fencing just because, you know, one of the concerns that we might have, uh, with expanded, uh, use of metal fencing in Midwest cities that, you know, we might see more rust or, you know, uh, fences that might, you know, have other signs of deterioration. Uh, so we want to make sure that they're, you know, adequately powder coated or I list some other ones here in the ordinance where I had looked up, uh, what some of the industry standard materials are for, for fence coatings. Um, ultimately, uh, I, the, the ordinance review committee, the OOCC, uh, recommended approval, uh, of this item. Um, staff and the planning commission, uh, recommended approval of this item, but not with the, uh, ribbed steel fencing.
Well, first off, I want to thank you for your hard work on this and you're right, we need to continually evaluate construction materials that are out there and make sure that we're within the market. So, uh, thanks. It, this is an excellent document and I appreciate it. So if there's no questions, Chair to entertain a moment, uh, a motion to approve.
I just have a clarification question. Matt, I want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. So, um, we are in the third tide with the metal fencing. We are going to allow this to occur in residential, uh, areas, but there are certain coatings that will be, um, approved or disapproved, if I understand correctly.
Yes, that, that's the way it is, it is currently drafted.
Okay. I wanted to make sure I was understanding. Okay. And that's a change from, we were not allowing this previously in residential, correct?
Correct. As, as it's, as it exists today, the ribbed steel fences material is not permitted in our residential areas.
Okay. Okay. Um, with that, I want to move to approve this item, please.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Summers. Um, I don't think you're off the hook yet, are you?
Uh-uh, these are.
Item number nine, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one sixty-four, discussion, consideration, possible action, approving an ordinance amending Midwest City Code, Appendix A, zoning regulations, section five, supplemental regulations subsection five point twelve point one, exterior construction requirements and standards and providing for repealer and severability. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. Uh, this is, this is another, uh, one of our, uh, ordinances on the agenda that kind of codifies what has been, uh, practiced. Um, so we have, um, we require masonry materials, um, on the exteriors of, you know, single-family residences and commercial, uh, buildings. Um, and, but that definition of what is a masonry material currently only exists, uh, under residential. Um, so basically all this does is it mirrors those same masonry materials and defines them under, uh, the, the commercial, uh, section as well. Uh, this is how we've always interpreted, um, what masonry materials apply to commercial properties. It just codifies it in ordinance.
I have a question on this.
Yes.
Under the municipality, as you, you say historically or currently, is putting up signs, notice signs, a discretionary matter or a mandatory matter under our current ordinance?
Sorry. Is this? Notification signs? Is this for the next agenda item?
Yeah, maybe. Sorry. I might, I may have skipped one. Sorry.
Because this, this agenda item is for.
Is this eight, right?
Uh, I have this as number nine.
We're at nine.
Okay, sorry. Yes, I'm talking about ten. Sorry.
I have one, I have one question. I, the way I read this, it prohibits glass walls. If somebody wanted to put an entire glass front on their house, that's prohibited by this code. Is that right?
Uh, yes, if somebody wanted to, well.
Eighty-five percent of masonry, so it, they couldn't have fifty percent glass.
I don't recall off the top of my head. It might exclude windows, but I don't, I don't recall. Um, if, if there was a situation where somebody wanted to pursue something of that nature, um, there is always the option uh, that they could seek a variance through the, the Board of Adjustment.
All right. Thank you.
I do have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention, motion carries. Item number ten, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one sixty-five, discussion, consideration, possible action, approving an ordinance amending Midwest City Code, Appendix A, zoning regulations, section seven, development review procedures subsection seven point one point three, public notice requirements for public hearings and providing for repealer and severability.
Thank you. Uh, so this is, uh, this ordinance deals with our, our notification requirements for our zoning application. So special use permits, uh, rezoning, PUDs, um, things like that. Uh, so the current requirement is that we send notices, uh, at least fifteen ba, business days in advance. Um, now quickly, that, that kind of becomes a little bit cumbersome when we're sort of setting up our schedule for the year uh, just because we have to exclude things like holidays and, and whatnot. Uh, so what we're proposing is to follow the language that exists in state statute, uh, and just go with twenty calendar days, um, instead. Uh, outside of that, um, we do make some changes as far as, uh, some of the, the requirements as far as the notification lists that we require applicants to provide. Um, you know, we're looking for a certified list from, from the county assessor. That's a free service that they provide. Uh, we're also looking for those mailing lists to be in a digital format. Um, that has two benefits really. A, it reduces the amount of staff time, uh, that we have to spend typing those addresses back out uh, when we need to send notices, but it also has the added benefit of, uh, reducing the possibility of staff error as we type those back out. So I, I view those as both, uh, very positive changes. Um, this, this was recommended for approval by both the planning commission, uh, and the OOCC.
Any questions?
So we're, we're addressing like notifications that are done through letter, right?
Yes.
And, um, and maybe put in the beacon or newspapers, right? This ordinance, does it address, and I guess going back to the previous question I posed to you early, um, does it, are posting signs, public notifications on the public street mandatory or discretionary under our municipal ordinances as you know them to be right now?
Yeah. Now, that, that is a great question. Um, so as it is written today, uh, it's written both ways. Uh, in one part of the ordinance, uh, it is written, um, that certain types of applications should have posted signs. And then in a different part of the ordinance, it says that cert, it says that all the sign requirements, uh, are discretionary. Um, so what this, one, one of the, one of the changes, um, that, that we're proposing with this ordinance is to sort of clarify that and make it discretionary, uh, for, for all of them and sort of remove that conflict.
So to Councilwoman Eads' point about public transparency, and I know the number by law, by ordinance, you have to only reach out to so many limited residents within a vicinity, right? However, sometimes decisions that we're making may impact a commuter, right? Somebody who lives right outside of that three hu, hundred border, residential border, um, as a matter of public transparency. Because I know I've had issues with this when decisions are made, notifications are sent and then later residents are like, well, nobody told us it was happening. Not everybody reads the, the beacon or can access the beacon. I, I read it, Mr. Harrison, but I'm not sure all my residents do. And I do recall that, um, Councilwoman Bane, this was a matter of discussion both with the city manager and I believe our city attorney, um, that the language in this ordinance as was written prior to your proposed, um, amendments, revisions, was not clear enough. And in the sake of public interest, I would like to offer a friendly amendment that we also require that it not be discretionary, but rather mandatory that public notices be placed, uh, in appropriate areas to adequately inform our residents and taxpayers about decisions that may impact them as well.
Anecdotally, I would say that around the mall, for instance, uh, signs have been posted for a year. And the residents that I have spoken to have seen the signs, but have not read them. They know that a sign is posted. They know it says something important, but they do not stop to read it. The print is too small. They're driving past. So the signs, uh, serve very little purpose other than to meet a legal requirement. So I think making them discretionary is probably the wisest course.
That argument could also be made with the letter notifications we've sent, and we've had that argument made about notices and inserts in our mailers, that many people will just junk them without reading them. But it's a matter of due diligence, and I would argue that a sign that just pops up, you know, in your local neighborhood that you weren't aware of, you hadn't seen before, may grab your attention, and meanwhile, not every resident, maybe as diligent as you and myself, Mr. Thompson, to take the time to read it, there may be the five that do, right? And therefore, then we give the city the benefit to say, we've taken every measure necessary to be able to inform you as a matter of transparency.
And I, and I agree with that, except for this caveat, that if, for any reason, that sign fails to post, let's say it's put up and weather destroys it, somebody parks a car or a truck in front of it, it's, it becomes grounds for contesting the action, the zoning change, or whatever was being requested, because of the improper zoning, improper placement of a sign. That just adds one more element of potential litigation to a situation that, and, and doesn't necessarily improve the public's communication. So, I, I think it would simplify matters to, to make it discretionary rather than mandatory.
If, if I might add also, I mean, if we're, you know, we've, we've talked earlier on a different item about finding ways that we can increase the, the visibility of some of our applications, possibly through the website, we could, we could try that, and if we're not finding that we're getting the amount of visibility that we're looking for, then, then we could probably, possibly look to revisit this.
Making it, or clarifying the ordinance, it makes a lot of sense, and, and making it discretionary makes a lot of sense, and, and it reduces the workload, so to speak, for you and your staff. So, with all that being said, Chair would entertain a motion.
Again, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the amendment of making the posting of signs mandatory.
Okay, have a motion on the floor? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion fails due to lack of a second. Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
I'm going to move to approve the item as written with the discretionary posting to the city website under, you know, ideally, like a banner stating public notices that you can go to and then see all of these things come up, so it's centralized, it's not maybe just, to take it a step further than further information, same with that previous one, maybe that's a better place to stick it.
Create a banner, yeah.
To create like a, a pop-up where public notices come there, you can see everything that you might need to know, similar in the newspaper, you go to the back pages, you go to public notices or legal notices.
And you're talking about the website, correct?
Yes, sir, I am. Uh-huh. I'm just saying by comparison, like, you know...
Absolutely.
We're all old, well, I shouldn't say we all. A lot of us are old school enough to have grown up reading the paper and know where to go to find public or legal notices. I'd like to see this same thing happen with regard to our city website, where you have like an easily identifiable, accessible tab that takes you to then a scrolling list of public notices.
Is that possible, Mr. Summers, under y'all's tab?
I think that we could, I think that we can accomplish.
And respectfully, I think that avoids some of the pitfalls that Councilman Thompson was identifying, as well as it, it's not a, a cost issue, because literally, like, once you have it in PDF, you drop it in. Josh is the expert on that. I mean, long story short, like, that's, that's kind of...
I think we can accomplish that.
Okay, I do have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, well, go ahead and do a real call vote.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Nay.
Word six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number eleven, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, approving an ordinance, amending Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter nine, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article I, Section nine dash one, Article six, Section nine three eighty, are hereby amended in their entirety and provided for repealer and severability. Mr. Bundy?
Not Matt. Not Matt.
Not Matt?
Yeah. We worked for months as staff amongst multiple departments. Sarah and Dawn are not here to enjoy this, but they worked long hours to go through three hundred and eighty sections of code. And basically, what we did was we rewrote or restructured the first half of Section nine, or, sorry, Chapter nine, which governs the building and the trades. And what we found was, over time, certain parts of the chapter had been updated, but other chap, parts of the chapter had not been, so to be consistent, we kind of restructured everything, so it was easier to read and follow. In my memo, I kind of go through some notable changes, I also go through every change. But many redundant functions were consolidated, the definitions, code amended, sections, et cetera. We put all the fees in a summary fee table, so it would be easier for builders, developers, citizens to follow. We did add a CPI, which previously was not. The CPI is only on certain parts of the permit fees. Some of the basic ones that were flat fees to begin with, we kind of left at flat fees. We updated some of the board language, we didn't update any of the structure of the, the boards, but we talked about to be more consistent when they meet, things like that. And then we created a new standalone article, fuel, gas, and then there were some other ones that we kind of separated out, like residential building code and commercial building code were lumped together and it was not really consistent with international codes. So, we kind of all split it all out and made it easier to follow.
Well, having reviewed that entire thing, Mr. Bundy, you're to be commended for y'all's hard work on that, and just like, and it certainly, it makes, it does make it easier to understand and, and get through it, so, thank you for that explanation. Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Wait, we need public discussion, correct?
Uh, no, sir. This isn't a public hearing. But you can certainly say whatever you need to say.
This is a complicated issue for a layman. I would guess the electricians, the plumbers, and the builders would be the ones that would be most affected by it. And I don't see any builders, plumbers, or electricians standing up to vociferously object to anything that you have done, so I'm going to assume that means that they've probably are okay with it.
To ask, to ask that group if they a hundred percent approve it would probably not happen. For the most part, we made it easier to read and understand. Things like the CPI, maybe they wouldn't support necessarily, although it's only, it's negligible cost overall, but we try to make it so that if you're building a house, or getting a fence permit, or even a storm shelter, that you can find the fee. That was the most important part. And then we try to make it so that the tradespeople could find their sections, but then they're not, they don't have to read through the sections that don't really apply to them, like the appeals. Those are usually only after due process kind of thing, so we try to clean it up a little bit.
It looks like you did an excellent job. I read all the way through it and didn't understand a word.
And you didn't, you didn't add any additional requirements, other than what's already in the building code. You just cleaned this whole thing up, right, correct?
Yeah, the, the main part is the code here. We did change, I, I know one of the discussion items that we've had in the past was the solar permit, so we added that.
Yeah.
So, there are little things like that, but overall, no, we did not make it extreme, any more strenuous to the builder.
Kind of bring them into compliance to the solar installer?
Yeah, so the, the solar was, was a problem. The solar permits currently, as, as of today, are a remodeling permit, is how we, we handle that, which is, is hard on them and it's hard on us, because that's a, we do a square foot of the house. And so, electrical perm, the electrical solar will be more like a generator in the future.
To piggyback off of Councilman Thompson's question, though, there was no due procedural mechanism where boards and bodies who were experts in these subject matters reviewed the revisions that is, or updating that was being recommended, right? It was city staff that basically did this comprehend, and that's what was overwhelming. There was a lot of updating, a lot of changes. I'm not an expert in this topic. I don't know what the cause and effect will be on those, that this will impact, and sometimes I fear passing any kind of an ordinance without having that in hindsight, right? Two months later, somebody comes and says, you guys changed the ordinance, and now it has an unintended negative consequence. So, it really was a city-driven, staff-driven, you know, revision.
Correct. And, and we did, we do have some advisory boards that are contained within this chapter. We did talk to them about the CPI portion, because that would directly affect their bottom line. Other than that, we did not show them the actual chapter, because it kind of came together towards the end for OOCC.
And, Mr. Thompson, to your question, we only got the agenda on Thursday of this week. There are a lot of developers, planners, subject matter experts who probably haven't even seen these proposed changes until, God knows, when they come across it, so that may be why we haven't heard from any of them.
Well, I, I think, he, I think he explained, to my satisfaction, he brought everything into compliance with national standards and things that are well-published and that are industry standards for electricians and plumbers. So, if they're familiar with the national building codes and the national and state standards, they'll be familiar with what we've, what we have here in the city, so...
Once again, the Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Abstain.
Go ahead and do a real call vote, please.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Abstain.
Word six?
Yes.
And the mayor?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we move into new business, public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council?
We got one person on the list.
Glenn, you're on deck.
Glenn Goldschlager, fourteen oh nine, Evergreen Circle. I appreciate all the changes you've made, and we've gone through this with the sign ordinance many, many years ago, where we made a lot of changes, and had we stuck to them, this entire city would look better. And now we're doing this again, so I would like us to consider adding a bunch of this to the charter at the next statewide election, so that it can't be changed by the next mayor who walks in and changes nine years' worth of work in thirty minutes. That's all I have to say.
I don't know that we can do that, Glenn, but thank you. Does anyone else have anything to bring before the council?
I have something for the further information section, just really quickly.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Mr. City Manager, I've noticed that it seems that the, for further information from, I'm so sorry, I just might completely blank. Neighborhood services code enforcement on citations and so forth seems to have dropped off. We talked about that once before. You still appear under further information, and it seems like it has disappeared from this section, and so, we talked about making sure it got added back in, but I'm still not seeing it. Is there a possibility we could add that? I think Mr. Stroh was here a minute ago, but...
Yeah, Ryan, we need to make sure that's back on here. I didn't know it had fallen off, so, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone else have anything to bring before the council? Mr. Ergenbryd.
Kevin Ergenbryd, one one five two four, Surrey Lane, Midwest City. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Tim. Hey, first of all, I just want to greet each and every one of you, especially the new council members. It's nice to see a full, I guess horseshoe, so congratulations, but, hey, I know last month, we took care of the water. I think we set that up for success. We took care of stormwater, really did a, a big job on that, set that up for success. But I'm still looking, after about a year now, I've got a developer ready to go on West Minister Eastside. We're still trying to figure out the sewer. Now, I know I came in and I made a comment, I said, you took two years to do the study and three weeks to fund it. Well, you know, I appreciate the fact that you're, maybe you slowed that down, you're doing your due diligence, and that's great, but I need to build some homes. You know, and while I'm sitting here, you know, waiting, you know, it takes, by the time I turn in a plan, it takes about a year before we can start building homes. So, while I'm sitting here waiting, and waiting to figure out how we can fund this program, I'd like someone to allow me to go and turn my preliminary plan in, let Brandon and his team work their magic with my engineer, because I've got, I've got about a million dollars sitting there, between expenses, land, and while we wait, and we wait, we could be doing our homework right now, so that whenever you figure out, hey, and honestly, I trust you to do the right thing. If there's an impact fee, there's an impact fee. Whatever that is, we're going to try to work with it. But I'd like to be moving forward, so that when you do say, hey, moratorium's lifted, then I'm ready to move forward. So, I'd, I'd like you to consider that, and I just want to thank you for doing a great job for the city of Midwest City. Bye.
Thank you, Kevin. Does anyone else have anything to bring before the council? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned, and I call the order of the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or if there is not unanimous consent, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
We have to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favors, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. We knew, we now move into new business, public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call the order of the Midwest City Municipal Hospital Authority. We do have consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests an item to be removed, or unanimous consent cannot be received, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I... Sorry.
Are you pulling an item? Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to pull items four and five, please.
And I'd like to pull two and three.
Chair to entertain a motion to indicate those items.
Move consent agenda item number one, with the exception for two, three, four, and five, being pulled for discussion.
Two, two, three, four, and five?
Yes, sir.
I have a second?
One more approval is one, correct?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Item number two, Mr. Lyon.
This is discussion, consideration, possible action, approving request for a six-month extension to the Midwest City Engineering and Construction Services Department to complete the Blue Lights grant. Mr. Bundy?
This is a request for extension. We previously were, were fortunate to receive funds for Blue Lights emergency...
We previously were fortunate to receive funds for a Blue Light Emergency Call Box project, and this is an extension. We just haven't gotten to it yet.
I, I'm just curious as to why we're, the delay? If it was a funding issue, we weren't getting the money in, in time? If it was a bidding issue, or?
Well, it's really, it comes down to a staffing problem. I've just been busy with all the other projects, so it's still something that we want to do. We just didn't have the staffing, myself included, in place to start the project. I never want that to be an excuse. Yes, yes, we have, we, we have gotten a lot of federal projects. We've gotten the sewer study. We have a lot of great projects that are being constructed here in the city. And so we, we have more staff now, we have the right staff to do more projects. But we didn't have that through the summer and the fall, but.
And we've added a, we've added a project manager to his department mid-year. It was to a certain degree, but he really needed more project managers for, for all these projects, and so we did add position.
Mr. Bundy, as I recall, you have been specifically instructed by this board to expedite the issues related to the moratorium. And I believe that you have done that, so it's reasonable to assume that a project like the Blue Light installation might take a backseat to one of the more pressing issues. And I see no reason at all not to give you more time to deal with one of those backburner issues, considering we have placed a great deal of demand on your time for the moratorium and the related sewer issues.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Chair to entertain a motion to approve, item two.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries, item number three, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration of possible action of approving a request for an additional six-month extension to the EDA 2022 Business Assistance Program Grant Project. Mr. Coleman.
We've had this grant program in effect for the most part since 2018. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it, but what it basically does is encourages those who own derelict, abandoned, and let me underscore obsolete, commercial buildings to receive up to a 50% reimbursement front by this grant once they complete demolition. Now, they still have to get three bids, and we still will only reimburse the lowest of three bids once everything is done. But it will cover up to 50% of the cost, the actual demolition cost, including asbestos abatement, sewer capping, and those kind of things, provided they go through the process as written.
So we had an off email conversation, you gave me all the information. I needed to mark that off as I got my answers I needed in regards to my questions. Sorry, I pulled it on accident. I do want to thank you though, because this program has been very successful and has helped really revitalize a lot of different areas as far as demolishing projects go, so thank you. And if I could, I honestly thought this was another delay, that I got my items mixed up. I think what I would like to encourage us to do, especially as we, thank you, sir, as, as we look at our next fiscal year. I know we do a lot of third-party contracting, whether it's for the engineering department or a lot of times for our legal department, and these outside third-party contractors end up costing us more than what it would cost to hire an additional staff member in, in different departments. And so I'd just like you to consider that if staffing is a reason that we get some delays within our projects.
Yeah, I, I really don't think that's the issue. The issue is we don't have specialized staff that, for all these outside consulting agreements, those are specialized areas that we don't have the staffing. We couldn't hire the staffing to get probably for most of these people because they make 10 times what we, we get paid here.
Gotcha.
But I, I understand your point.
With that being said, are there any other questions? Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries, item number four.
Discussion consideration of possible of act, action of appointing Megan Bain as the Ward Five representative on the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority Trust Board of Grantors for a four-year term ending on April 25, 2028.
Any questions or discussions?
I have that. So Councilwoman Bain, I see that Megan Bain is your appointee to the BOG, and I'm not remotely disputing her qualifications to serve. My concern and the reason why I pulled this item as well as the next item is from whence folks come who are serving on the board. You know, I think that you have raised the issue in the past, for example, about candidates that were going to be placed on committees about like, you know, how are those candidates determined and so forth? And it is important to me to see that we have equality and representation to all of our various boards by folks from our individual wards because it diversifies, you know, the focus, the experiences, the interest, et cetera, that those folks have. And so I just wanted to ask with regard to Megan as the candidate that you've selected, as well as I'm going to have the same type of questions for you, Mayor, and again, I know yours is a reappointment, but I just don't like to see us get where we have stacked. So like if, if Megan were to be approved, right now, it's my understanding there's already a representative from Ward Three that serves to the BOG, and you may not know yet, Councilwoman Maxwell, but like, that's where, that's where my concerns come from. So was there no one from your ward, you know, by way of solicitation, resumes, et cetera, that you could, you know, get to do this? Or is it just that you felt like, you know, Megan would be a, an outright asset to the BOG? Which I don't question, don't get me wrong, I'm just, my concern is about the representation of the various wards on the committees.
So I, I've had the same concern because there are boards and bodies that appear to me have no, you know arbitrarily, don't have the requirement that they're nominated by.
One-on-one, right.
By council people, a lot of them designated just, you know, for mayor's appointments. Some of these boards and bodies don't even have the requirement that you live within jurisdiction of the city or any kind of a qualification or background to give us the criteria you need to serve. So I think we've had kind of an unfair, I guess, description for some of these appointments, if you will. As far as your question in regard, and we had a few board members that were appointed. For example, former Councilman Rick Dawkins, who was on the planning board, who was appointed by the mayor to serve the, missed the unexpired term until we had elections for Ward Three, was then again reappointed to the planning board. Our planning board is packed with former mayors and council people. We don't have actual diversity of regular, hardworking people who are represented, whether we're talking about this horseshoe necessarily all the way down through our boards and bodies, and I don't mean any disrespect to those who serve, but we repeatedly reappoint the same individuals to the same boards and bodies. And I'd like to see more equitable diversity and representation on behalf of all of our residents. In regards to your question specifically about Ms. Bain, former Councilwoman Bain not being from Ward Five, this seat has been empty for a little while. I actually reached out to Ms. Joyce Jackson, who I respect dearly, because she was actually charming out. She's a very qualified person. She's done her due diligence and has been the best representative our ward could have, even asked if she would be willing to serve longer, so I could have conversations about maybe looking at the term limits. She had other commitments and was not interested. I also reached out to a judge who lives within our ward. City said there would be no conflicts of interest, but after speaking to the judge, it was determined that the law would deem that to be a conflict of interest. I reached out to another, another person who was interested actually reached out to me. The city attorney deemed that it would be a conflict of interest. So there's been multiple attempts. And again, it is very important that the individuals appointed to these seats have some sort of, one, investment, interest, qualifications and expertise, and to be quite frank, Councilwoman Bain during her tenure was very committed and invested in issues that impacted Ward Five, arguably more so than some of my colleagues. I know when the apartment issue was going on, she was even a more prominent advocate for making sure we don't displace those residents in that community, fought for funding, so I think the residents of Ward Five will find an incredible advocate in her. And she will have an open door policy and be accessible to them. Now, if we have a resident from Ward Five who's interested in this, who doesn't have any conflicts, we can definitely consider them. And I know there's a series of empty boards and bodies, seats, right? I got a list from Jill, so we got plenty of opportunities for anyone that's interested to serve.
If I could just raise an aside point really quickly, and again, I don't question Ms. Bain's qualifications having served upon this body. It's not that issue, it's just an issue of ward representation to the boards that is of concern to me. As an aside also, similarly, I have a representative to the BOG who is going off due to a term limit. And I want to raise the question, which may be a question, I don't know, you probably don't want to take this one up, but maybe punt it to Dawn, in terms of can we expand the tenure for those representatives to the BOG from two years to four years? And again, I recognize our partnership with the Chamber with regard to BOG, but I'm just, I'm putting that out for discussion, so to speak, as.
Yeah, we'll have to have Dawn look at that or our trust attorney.
Okay, and that's, I, I understand, I'm just, but thank you to the voice of Midwest City Council. I know, exactly, and I'm just questioning that.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question. If Megan is approved to this position, she will be representing Ward Five. So that means that Ward Three is okay, I can still nominate someone I know right now is filled. But it doesn't stop me from recommending someone if that position came open.
Jill, and I know you and. Yeah, traditionally, but not within the bylaws, because I had some conversations with Dawn, very, very specifically where I said, that does this person have to live within Ward Five? So just in, in regards to your question of ward specific, it was not my understanding that the bylaws required, as long as they were residents within the jurisdiction of Midwest City or worked within the jurisdiction of Midwest City, whether employed or organizationally, that they would meet criteria, and had to be 25 and a few other things.
I entertain a motion to approve, item number four.
Since there are roughly 10,000 people in each ward, it kind of strains credibility that you have to go to Ward Three to find somebody that's qualified to give away money.
Well, it is a very progressive ward, so I'm not surprised with that at all.
Very nice, Councilman, very nice.
Once again, Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
I'm going to move to deny this item actually for the reason that I've stated, not having anything to do with Ms. Bain's qualifications, but just because of concern I have.
No, I second it. And the main reason that I'm going to second it is that something that the voice in the room has said, it's been in the past practice, that we keep it by the ward, and we've had the charter with the chambers, it's a work in progress every year, and I think we need to follow what we've done in the past because I don't want that to become. It's working well right now, and I don't want to do anything that will ruffle that, so I'm going to, I'm going to second her motion.
I do have a properly formed motion and a second, now go ahead and conduct a roll call vote.
Now, if we go, he's a positive.
It means that her, her, her appointment is going to fail.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three? Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
No.
Word six?
No.
And the mayor?
Abstain. So the motion fails. What do we got? Three, three?
Three, three.
Three, three. On, on a tie, it fails.
I would like to see the language on that.
I'm sorry?
I would like to see the official source of authority that you're quoting, that it's high means it fails.
That's just a permanent.
Okay, then I move to approve. I move to approve the nomination of Megan Bain.
I do have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion fails due to lack of a second. We're kind of at loggerheads, ladies and gentlemen, so I would suggest that we pull this item in particular, and we clarify some of the issues that have been brought up, and we bring it back at a later date. That's my recommendation.
If we do that, I would ask that we do that with regard to item number five as well. I do see that that is your appointment, Mayor, and that is a reappointment, but I mean, if we're going to question from whence these folks are coming, like with your appointment, it's always been a citywide, you, you know what I mean? You, you get to cast the widest net. Similarly, the vote for your office is based upon citywide as opposed to ward specific. But I'm just thinking, if we're going to discuss these issues respectfully, it'll probably come up at the next meeting, I'm guessing. It, would that, would you be opposed to that, Mayor, to just hold both of them for discussion?
I don't have an issue with it, and I entertain a motion to do so.
Just so we're clear, that even if we put this off a month or two months, the first time these people are going to meet is.
September, right?
When's the next? But it's not to review grants, it's just to review the. But if there's vacant seats, I mean, there's still, there's still a quorum. We'll still have a quorum. So there'd have to be five there, so we could still.
So it won't affect next year's grants?
It will not have any impact on next year's grant.
Well, okay, we, we don't take grant applications till November.
No, sorry. No, they, we intend to approve all new grant for the new fiscal year. They approve their end of year, and they will give you a schedule for life for your approval on September 1st by the trust. They must be offered to the public. They are due by November 1st, at which time the Ward of Grantors begins reviewing all of the applications.
So will, will we have a quorum?
May I say something, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
And with everybody else, you, you can't go anywhere. You can't go.
Respectfully, I'm asking that this item has failed based upon votes, okay? I'm asking that we reconsider this item and item number five and bring it back at the next meeting with clarification of the ability to apply within or outside of your ward for clarification. Yours, Mayor, should be citywide, but we'd just like to know the composition.
Well, as long as we don't shoot ourselves in the foot and we hinder the process.
So again, but we all may come forward with our appointments, I think you were saying. Jill, the voice of the Midwest City Council, what spots are open? I know that I have a spot coming up, but because my lady doesn't turn on the ballot.
Are you talking about the Ward of Grantors?
Yes, for BOG.
One, three, and five.
Plus the chamber. One, three, five, and the mayor, and that chamber. And I have a chamber nominee coming on the main, and I have the mayor's, and Ward Five.
So Susan and I would just ask, why are you wanting to take the mayor's since, is it just becoming? Is it just because he's already voted for, same person, or?
Just since we're going to basically, we can all get our submissions in and have them ready to go before next month's council meeting. So we still have time to get them appointed, approved before the June meeting that way. And then that way, everybody knows, like, again, it either is ward-specific or it's not ward-specific, again, whatever's in the trust language. That will get additional clarification on kind of where you would have.
But I would not say it has any word in it.
Okay.
The mayor does, correct? Is that what you're saying?
The mayor is at large. And not his one next there at large.
But, but, and maybe Jill, you and I are, please clarify. My understanding from the email I have from Don that it was not a requirement that my nominee, or any nominee from a ward, be ward-specific.
It, it, it does not require that.
That's just traditionally been precedent, but there is no bylaw language that would restrict the nomination of Megan Bain outside of the fact that we may want to rewrite the rules now in order to prevent potentially Mrs. Bain from being appointed or somebody from outside of a ward in the future serving, even though it may have happened before, right?
The only thing I would say to that, Sarah, is I haven't seen your emails you've got from Don. And Don is not here to state that, and I agree with you 100%. Maybe Megan is qualified, don't have fun with that. I would just like to make sure, for my concern, that Don has said that. And I'm not doubting, I'm not saying that you.
No, I respect that, and I think Jill also confirmed that the language, and she's not the attorney, she's just saying traditionally, it's been people nominate from within the wards, but it's not her understanding that the bylaws require that specifically.
Okay, so to move this along.
I just wanted to say something to that, Mr. Mayor. Before the meeting, Don did tell me that he had already given all the appointments to be legal and all.
As far as the nominations that were made, thank you.
So with that being said, is there any change in our course of direction? Okay, we are going to table four and five, take no action, bring it back to the next council with clarification on the issues that were brought forth, correct?
Which would mean I could make the same nomination unless.
Well, my nomination will not change.
Okay, well, and I don't plan on changing my nominations unless there's.
But we do need to clarify, clarification, and so these two items are tabled, and we'll take no action.
Yes, and just for the record, my vote was not dependent on whether it was legal or not. It was the principle of the matter that caused my vote to be as was that, and it will not change.
Well, I, I respect that, and, and I like your principle, and I'd like to see you also be vocal and active in applying that principle to all the other boards and bodies that are packed by fellow friends of my colleagues.
We now move into new business public discussions. Anything to bring for the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call the, uh, call the order of the Special Economic Commission, and we do have one discussion item, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration of possible action to approve December 12, 2023 meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
You got a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Extension motion carries. We do have a public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring for the commission? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.